Freedom of Information Act. FOIA.
Implication, Mr. Ferguson, would you mind leaving the implication, please?
Our fault in heaven is created to help America and all things. We come home after forty-four tonight. First of all, we're asking for change for all that's seen, for seeing all the people. We ask you to forgive them for the things that they do, just they know not what to do. We had a bunch of investors meeting, and all of those concerned take a place in debate. I know my state didn't have any pool of resources where it could allow the city to go far in positive way and not be destroyed by the devil's activities that probably was moved into this bank we were in.
And now we have to, but...
Thank you to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, on a mission, on a god, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The determination of court, the demand for... Okay, Secretary. All right. We have a visitor to comment with no action. Does any of the visitors have any comments to say?
Oh, sorry. I make a motion to have heard the consent agenda items.
Okay, this consent agenda are approved the minutes of October 8, 2025, October 29, 2025. Approved financial report, approved accounts payable, approved order, report October 2025. That's the consent agenda.
Any more questions?
Okay, here's made by Miss Nelson. Go second. I have a second by Ms. Hayes. All in favor? No? And all in favor? All in favor? You?
So...
No.
Do we have to carry?
Okay. Mr. Bauer? In favor or no?
No, ma'am.
We have two not voting movement. Do we have to carry that motion?
There was three actions.
No motion being carried. All right, now we have the visitors. Does any visitor have anything to say?
I don't know if I counted the visitors, but I had put in a motion to stick around the conversation. So should I wait?
And that was your time.
Well, mine is, but it's your time. Okay, that's fine.
I'm hearing you got three minutes.
All right, cool. All right, for those who don't know me, my name is Daniel Broseman. I've been, you know, a part of this town for about twenty-eight years now. And so the reason for me coming down here, because I don't come down here very often, is because I was at Tom's garage about two or three months back. Bradley had some leftover wood on one of his pieces of property, and I asked if I could have it. And he stalled for a few minutes, and then he charged me up. He said, "You're lucky I don't beat your ass for making claims that you own the city." And so I came to City Council tonight because every one of you guys are a witness. I have never filed any official paperwork anywhere that says that I've made an open claim that I'm the owner of the city approved, never. I don't think there's anybody out here in the public that has received the claim or official documentation or nothing. So I don't know where this is coming from, but that's what launched Lawson against the city approved. I shouldn't feel threatened to come down here. I did everything you guys asked for, both from the previous administration and the one when Jesse was here, because I was here during that City Council member meeting or City Council meeting, and me and Jesse kind of had it on. All right, so with the respect of this city, I've done everything that the clerks, past and present, have requested so far, along with the County Commissioner's office, along with the County Courthouse building. I was told to be able to raise money for the city that I need a tax number. So I did that. Then they told me to file with the Secretary of State. I did that. Then they told me I needed to get articles of organization. I needed to put bylaws in and all this other crazy stuff. I did all that. Then they said you need custody numbers and DANS numbers to file for federal grants and money for the city, because from my understanding at that time, we were just working with hot car. And I get it, there's senior citizens in the community that they need reliable telecommunications. These groves, under the Texas Transport Code, they're under city jurisdiction. That means that the city is required to maintain them. All these streets, they got all these pitfalls, they're all worn away. I don't know what y'all did with the paved streets, but now that we got this other stuff going on, it's y'all's responsibility to maintain them in good condition. So I have come here asking, hey, man, anybody have any official documentation showing that I've ever made a claim that I own this city? And I think this silence is a no. Furthermore, I had a motion for referendum way back in 2022, because that was the next step. The County Commissioner said, instead of petitioning the district court to open up another city out of my garage, using the same stuff, because nobody claimed that they had any city property that they owned, and that was one of the biggest issues, other than the building, which is now, I guess, the old railroad station. I was like, I can help you get that, because we as a city have what they call eminent jurisdiction, eminent domain, and Mr. Birkin can probably attest to that. I'm pretty sure he probably, you know, want to get compensated for that. But any abandoned property, mismanaged property, the city can take. And then in exchange, the city can develop that for other, you know, structural rehabilitation projects, like for instance, the water. Everybody's complaining about the water. We have boil notices that are not being put up at the United States Postal Service, because that's really the only public place.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And you start timing me, Governor, to say I thank God for each and every one of y'all here today, all of you, and I pray, Lord, that you understand that Jesse, like I said, he missing your name, and that took it back to eight years you was here when Ray Sibley promoted, and I see you got the crew that backed you there on things that caused us all confusion and problems. But that's all right. What we do, we got to figure out a way to work together regardless of the past. We all, all the pictures, thing, and all, like, following people around and driving private cars and trucks and things, video and everything, I've seen, I've seen some of you. I ride around too. But the thing is, though, we got to understand, we got to work together. We need to change these things, been going on way too long, and that we've been making progress. About the roads, the roads were set to be, where did you catch them, right there? They had to be a setup to the roads, and that was stalled. Trying to forget a lot of things and trying to help us, all here with different things. But when you fight this sin and this thing, this angels, and every turn you make, you have to understand, even though we're there always and everything good. And that's what we've been doing, we've been trying to make some progress on everything. Been trying our best to do roads, did grass to help build the property up, and as boys, taking the property, that was something they practiced in old days, was when the property was grew up in the town, they lived there to take the property, and they took a lot of property. In fact, I got a ranch away, I don't have it now, so let me take that back. They took those, they lied, and they worked with all the leaders, like you do. Took all the cows and horses, even the pet cows that I grew up in, and they did the other thing, that they put on the farms and that, all of them. And they told me they sold, most of them waved, you know, home, and the rest of them, they sold at the hub and auction. And the man who died, Mr. Jackson, he confessed to a lot of things to them. And now he's here, he's coming to a food camp, get away there, and better than that. And he told him he was sorry for what he did. He had a ride and fostered a list to take everything with him. And now, that's not the first time I heard about it, that the city takes somebody's property, and that's not the first time, and we vowed by that, we totally know what the property to be taken from, and heard upon it. We've had videos that went on way back, and video cover all kinds of racist conversation all the way around, and the thing is though, but we got past that. Now y'all going to bring them back up to try to use the money against the roads, and that's going to make no sense. See, I got to understand, everybody's been calling somebody something. Hey, look at me, I'm seventy-five years old, how many, what do you think I've been called? Well, it's my face, even. What do you think they done did to me? We always got to move forward. You can't be, you know, to race it and, and trade just for no reason. If you've got a good mind on you, I like that and everything, but the thing is, you got to understand when I start this, I'm just saying.
Item number six.
Are we done with public comment, or? Well, if we had the boss lady here, I'll go right now, you start my clock. Just start my clock. I wasn't even going to speak, but since we don't have the boss lady here tonight to regulate things, so I think that was kind of a disrespect, slapping the face to everybody in the city for her not showing up. No offense to you, you know, pro town mayor, I'm just saying that everything going on, she should have at least been here.
Yeah, she's sick.
Okay, it says no discussion, you're talking to my three minutes, thank you. Rules of decorum, motion. Thank you. Can't follow the rules, hit the door. That's what there are, everybody talks about the rules in here, nobody follows them. That's why I'm coming to this town, this is why I'm investigating, looking at everything. If you don't want to follow the rules, I'm not going away. It's all about the rules. You guys put those rules in, the council did. They voted ordinances in, you guys put stuff in place, but you guys are hypocrites, you don't follow your own rules. So guess what? I'm going to make sure I enforce that, I'm going to make sure you guys follow your damn rules. Going back to the threats with Tanya's husband, Brad. It seems to be a common thing, because it happened to be my first council meeting here. In fact, I went to the point of filing a sworn complaint with pleasure on Brad. Nobody does that, everybody's scared of the man. He's a lunatic, okay? He needs to be locked up. If the guys don't want to do what you got to do, and you want to keep interfering with that man's job, I'm going to make sure you guys get charged for abuse of office, suppression. There's state statutes, we don't have to go to federal court for it. And unfortunately, I had some dirt on Tanya and Brad about saying certain things. I didn't even put that video out today, figuring they wouldn't show up. And there's some other things I've got going on, I've got a lot of records requests out. Constable Carter, Chief Carter, I mean, he's got three different titles or something. But we're definitely going to expose that little caper here in Coolidge, because I don't even know why he's here, but I'll find out, I'll get down to the bottom of that. So let's see, how much more time I got, a minute? I'm going to make sure I milk my time tonight. Coolidge, you know, for whoever wants to run for mayor, if you think you can do a better job, step up, I'll let you use my platform. I've got over twenty thousand subscribers on YouTube, I've got over six thousand on Facebook. I think that's, what, twenty-six times more people than you guys got in the city of Coolidge? So it's a little bit of influence there. So anybody who wants to step up and run, take on Tanya, and, I'm sorry, Queen Tanya, and the court jester, Brad, I'll be more than happy to let you use my platform to move those two out, and hopefully you guys can do better this term. And if you don't, I'll be back to get you out of office if you don't want to do the job and do it right. It's about doing the job, it's not favoritism, there's no nepotism, it's politics. You don't get the public service for the money or the power or the pleasure. You do it to serve the people, and that's what we're here for. Seven, six, five, four. Oh, by the way, you guys want to subscribe, follow me, Beazie Watchdog on YouTube and Facebook and time.
Any more public comments? Okay, now we're moving on to item number six. Community Development Block Grant, public hearing. Any information on that, Secretary?
It's the same one we had to do last meeting. The grant works did not get it posted, and so they have it posted this time. So the one we did last, last meeting, it didn't count. So we're just going to, we need to do another five minutes to talk about if there are any... Anyone that isn't happy with the grant for the fire truck. That would be complaints.
If there are any public comments, we can go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay, and there are no public comments, attorney, block grant, we will close that public hearing. We can get a motion.
Let me make a motion to have heard, community development blocks, we're going to have a hearing, and it's a no.
Okay. Okay, motion by Ms. Nelson, and second by Ms. Shirley. All in favor? All right. All motion carried. Bits around the listed station.
No.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Handrail, handrail work. Where can count handrails?
Here's a proposal that someone had brought up, willing. Because it says handrail work through town and around the bank, and we just had prepared two handrails, and then reposition loops on eight. We only received one, I believe we can table it until we get more, because tell us that it was done over coffee. I don't know if it's... So... And it's just, like Mr. Bauer was talking, the amount of, I think, some materials and the labor just seems a little...
Yeah. I make a motion to table that in the last meeting.
A second. Okay, so motion by Ms. Shirley, and second by Ms. Nelson, that we... Table the... The work around the bank, the furniture and the handrail. All in favor? All right. Motion carried. Right, now we're on item number eight, proposal for bits around the listed station.
We don't have a proposal for that one, nobody got back with us. We reached out to four or five, and nobody got back with us before the meeting.
Due to there being no proposals, I make a motion...
Here's one for WBE services.
That's not for the listed station, that's the sewer plant.
So, yeah. All, okay, let them hear. Okay, this is...
So due to there being no proposals, I make a motion to table that until next meeting.
Second.
It was a motion by Ms. Shirley, and second by Ms. Nelson, that we table the bits around the listed station. All in favor? All. All right. Oh, is, I said, so, is that going to include number nine?
No, number nine is the quote from Jerkison.
Oh, okay. All right, so number nine is a quote to discuss the list station. We just have one quote?
Yes.
And that's a quote from Jerkison Pond.
Yes.
Do you know much about that?
I mean, it's a little, what did he talk about last meeting?
Yeah, he, he was here last meeting, and, and, I mean, it's a steep cost, but, I mean, it's what needs to be done.
So the, the quoted price is forty-one, four hundred. That's the quoted price for Jerkison Pond. Nobody else think?
Isn't this what we discussed last meeting about, trying to figure out how we were going to pay this? So since we don't...
We're going to pull from that.
No, this isn't the, no, this was, that's for the average.
Yeah, no, what I'm talking about, not at the special meeting, at the meeting before, when we talked about, when Jerkison came and talked to us, and we talked about finding ways to pay for this, like the loans and all of that.
Yes.
So we have not go streams.
Like four minutes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, he did talk about that.
Yeah.
I would love to see that, yes.
I mean, I know this is something that needs to be done, but I really don't like it till we know exactly.
Do you want to table till they can provide, like, documentation of the payment plan?
Yeah, because, I mean, we need to know how we're going to pay it, where it's going to come from, I mean, those kind of things before we just say, yeah, let's do this. So I make a motion to table that until we have the documentation on the payments plan.
All right, so motion by Ms. Shirley.
Second.
And second by Ms. Nelson, that we table the quote for the list station. We have further information from the Jerkison company. All in favor? Ms. Hayes?
Oh, yeah.
All. That's motion passed. All right. Number ten, proposal for Cheryl Sand work around back side of pond. Is that what this one's for, the WB?
No, that's for the sewer plant, so that's...
That's the WB services?
That's a sewer plant, by fence line, yes.
Yeah, the sewer plant.
That's it.
So these, right there, if y'all have questions about the proposal?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, sir, you have anything to say?
If y'all have any questions about it, that is to do the lane clearing around, to disassemble the old fence, clear the trees out, fix the dams that are starting to erode, or, you know, those ponds out there, and then to install three thousand foot worth of fence. Y'all have to decide on the fencing you'd like to use. There's two different quotes there. There's a quote for field fence on there, line item, and there's a quote for the chain link. The chain link is TDCQ compliant. That's, it's a little more pricey, but it is TDCQ compliant. Yeah, and the final front at the bottom, it says that the quote's final price will be determined on what bench you'll choose. And that is, that is what y'all providing materials, that is just, we provide the equipment and the labor. The only thing about chain link, I can say, is it's TDCQ compliant. Y'all, TDCQ requires a six-foot tall chain link fence with three poles of bar, three strength barbed wire around it. It's a security fence around all sewer plants. Y'all better see fines if it is not up to...
So if we go with the other, will we not, not the chain link, will we not be in compliance with TDCQ?
No, ma'am, and we had already talked to Mr. Christina and Ms. Tanya when I first came out to look at the set. We can do the field fence, the field fence would be field fencing with a string of barbed wire on top and a string of barbed wire on the bottom, keep the pigs from going underneath, keep the cows from pushing in on the top. And they might, TDCQ might not say anything to you, but y'all want that risk of them issuing a fine for that.
It's a little less, because it's technically a secondary fence, because you have a primary fence around the perimeter, and then that's a secondary, so it's kind of like a here and there. They may say something, they may just leave it alone.
You're at the grace of them at that point. Yeah, that's, we'll do whatever y'all want to do, it's just completely up to y'all. We just wanted to put the info out there, and then y'all can make an informed decision.
There's other things that are more modeled out there than just that fence, too.
Yeah.
So, I mean...
I agree with that.
You could, you could spend the other eighteen thousand or whatever on fixing that other stuff. That's my opinion.
Yes.
Like the electronics, the aerogators, it all needs to go home.
And as you like to say, if you fix that, you will get fined on that.
The fence, the fence is a little mediocre, as far, as far as you, as far as you can expect. The fence is mediocre compared to what else is out there.
You could probably reach out to Matt, and talk to him, and ask him what they would do, because they may just go with a field fence, because it's a secondary fence, because you got...
We got, we got a chain link fence around the basic part of it, so you're actually only holding livestock out of your, your first and secondary ponds.
And since it's so far off the main road, you should be fine, because they could go with a field.
Yes.
Just, you know.
There's a lot of trees out there that's... Yes.
Okay. I think the fence is...
The fence is going to cost eighteen thousand for just the, just the, all of it, or field fence.
So we just want to take that step right now for the fencing?
Well, they're going to have to clear, they're going to clear the trees and everything on it. There's a lot of workouts here.
I'm going to be bringing in a D4 donzer.
It's a, it's a, I don't worry.
It's about a twenty thousand.
Yes, there, there is.
It ain't no mine.
There's, there's a lot of big trees out there that need to come out. That's, that's probably the biggest violation we have with TDCQ.
There could be, you could technically do a two-stage operation if you want to do a clearing now, and then get your employees to install a bunch of fence around it to keep cows out. But you probably just be only able to push it back a month.
You're still running a risk.
Yeah.
Last thing you want to do is be dragging a dead cow around in ponds.
It's not a fun task. With the third level.
It's not a fun task, but they've done that.
What is the minimum we could do? Is that field fencing?
Yeah, that field fence is eighteen thousand less.
It's a lot better price. It's a lot easier to do, too, a lot less set to go.
Yeah, the last two is that either, is that...
Yeah, either or, it's, it's not a solid sixty-one thousand, I didn't realize that. It's an award.
So what if this, are we going to go with on this?
We'll go with the field fence.
So we're going to go with the fence?
Show Mexico.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all we're going to...
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to take the proposal, to go with fencing around the back side of the sewer clamp with the removal of all the trees and debris.
A second.
With the field fencing.
Okay, we will go, it has been motion by Mr. Bauer, and second by Ms. Shirley, that we would go with the field fencing that will surround the sewer plant. Was that all?
And a clearing of that.
And a clearing...
Clearing of the trees.
And clearing of the trees.
And fixing the ponds is what you said.
Yes, sir. Where the erosion is taking place on the dams.
And it will technically push your fences back, will be able to give your employees more...
Clean up the ponds.
Yes, ma'am, with maintaining the fence. This is pushing it back on either side just a little bit, so they can get on each side without, would be right next to the pond tanks, from being a spray, we keep the fence on...
Roughly, roughly footage off of the fence to the largest tree.
Ten, ten to fifteen foot bending.
So you're going to get three, four inch fence?
All in favor?
Very much in favor.
I, I make a motion, I'll be in favor, why not?
It was taken by Ms. Shirley. All right. Uh, eleven. Uh, Mahindra discussion to trade in or repair.
Uh, that's.
This was.
The red tractor.
The, the, the little white tractor that keeps breaking down on us.
The tractor. Are you happy to discuss it for that?
No, they didn't, uh, the guy that we are talking to about it, he didn't give us what we needed, so it probably isn't taking.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table it until we get the proper information to you vote on.
Second.
Okay, this, uh, motion by Ms. Shirley and seconded by Ms. Nelson that we table the, uh, Mahindra, uh, repair until we get further information. All in favor? Uh, motion passed. All right, uh, number twelve, fuel tank for warehouse.
The, that would be the, the big fuel tanks like what they have at the school. Um, you can contact certain, uh, fuel companies and sometimes they will provide, um, those tanks as long as you continue to get fuel with them. I haven't been able to get much more information as of just yet, but it is still working on this.
So we don't have any information on how much that's gonna cost or anything like that?
I don't.
It'd be roughly somewhere between two thousand to five thousand dollars for the electronic fuel pump and the tank. Uh, the main, the main purpose of, of that being put on there was because we, uh, at the Cool Stop, we pay sales tax as well as state tax. And the city doesn't pay that, so, um, we're paying that along with purchasing fuel from there when we could be getting it a lot cheaper.
Can we put waivers out for companies to go with?
Uh, the only one that's special really happened is also a lot of other opportunities that are kinda controlled in that environment, but, uh, there's Shelby, Chevron.
There's Thinkcoast in Fikes, now Casey's.
Yeah, so the main, the main purpose was not to reach out to, you know, so to get action or anything, but decided that's even something y'all might want to look at. Maybe just for the UBS and Trac Stop. If y'all want information on it.
I, I, I think that would be something that we could get information on. To just, I mean, see what it would. So I make a motion to, um, get some proposals and more information on getting fuel tanks for the warehouse to supply, um, fuel to all of our people.
No, second. Second, it was second, I mean, uh, motion by Ms. Shirley and seconded by Ms. Nelson that we get information concerning a proposal for the fuel tanks for the warehouse. All in favor? All. Motion passed. Oh, make sure. All right. Uh, this is item eighteen, Bystone letter for intent to purchase water on July first, twenty twenty-six.
Can you read the letter?
I do.
Uh, it says, "The city of Pilates approved a change in our wholesale water provider from Post Up Water District to Bystone Water Supply. This change will take effect on July first, twenty twenty-six. Please consider this letter as our official letter of intent pending any necessary contract reviews or evaluations that may arise prior to the effective date. This is notification of our intent not to renew the current contract with Post Up Water Supply Corporation effective July first, nineteen eighty-six as amended. We appreciate your cooperation during this transition and look forward to working together to ensure a smooth process."
Can I ask a question? Is this water gonna be safer than food to drink?
Yes.
Does it, please, from the expiration date of the old contract, could the extension have been mitigated some years ago? Uh, so putting on, on notice, so they don't have plenty of time to be prepared for that. And then Bystone needs that to prepare to provide, which that way is.
Can I respond to Ms. Jensen about? The reason it's gonna be safe for Ms. Jensen is because, um, Post Up has been holding back on like our flooring levels and everything, so it will be safer water, and I don't think we would have as many boil damage issues.
We'll see.
So I make a motion to approve the letter about Bystone's request to purchase water on July first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, it's motion by Ms. Nelson and seconded by Ms. Hayes that we approve the letter intent to purchase water from Bystone and also, uh, give, uh, information concerning this change to Post Up. Uh, all in favor? All. Motion passed. All right, item number fourteen, Alliance John County Appraisal District Board Directors voting for council members only.
It shows that we have seventeen votes to, to start between five nominees. Sunny Adams, Jocelyn Anglin, Todd Freeman, Carl Haddock, and Cody Muir. We got seventeen votes to distribute as needed out of all five of them, only know one. So.
Um, when I did talk to the appraisal district office, they said we could put all seventeen votes to one person. We can split them up between five, or we could not use all seventeen votes and, but we have seventeen votes to use. But we do not have to use all of them, or we can use all of them.
I know that Carl Haddock, he's treasurer of the town stoppers. And then he's good with numbers, he's, has integrity, honest, so. We go, we, like to everyone who's all known, should be at a full heart. Does anyone know anything? He said, "What can I like to do?" I mean, we can be fair and just.
Find out, let us more information.
Yeah, but it has to be done before it's needed, so.
Not unless we give three votes to each, I don't know how to, sound would be fair, I don't, we don't know if it's that way. Do we have these or votes, Kelly?
No, they, um, they just were given seventeen votes, but we do not have to give all of them. Or they said all of them could go to one person, could go, we could split them between two, we could split them between all five. We just have seventeen votes. Um, it does say that it's not, we don't have to get it back to them until, it has to be before December fifteenth. So with us having a meeting on the tenth, if y'all would like to review this and vote on the tenth, we can, or we can, I mean, it's totally up to y'all.
I, I think that we should probably, we can look into this people and, and see what kind they are before we just give everybody one vote or whatever.
Um, I make a motion to table the Longstop County Appraisal District Board Directors voting for council members only till our next meeting of December tenth, you said?
Yes.
Do we know more information about the other four candidates?
Second.
Yes, and motion by Ms. Nelson and seconded by Ms. Shirley that we table the, uh, Line Town County Appraisal District Board Directors voting, uh, for council members only until we can find out further information about the, uh, the nominees here. All in favor? All. All passed. All right, um, item number fifteen, the Stone CTA Office Discussion.
I placed this on there. Not knowing, did you get, um, that email?
Um, yes, I did get that email. Uh, we did, you know, figure some things out, but I do have the email where the invoice that you got, we never received, and she stated that. Uh, the only invoice we got was the one on September twelfth. I also have where we did pay.
Right.
Um, and I also have the email where she, uh, received the check and where, um, I sent the bank statements. That was also my fault, um, wouldn't be able to switch spots. I was not informed that I needed to do that, but, um, I sent them to her, everything was up to date, um. I told her if there was anything that she needed to, you know, reach out to us personally so I could get it to her and kind of not wait so long. But now we won't have that problem, but I am working on that also.
When, when did you, when, when did you send that to her?
Which one?
The statements.
Uh, the same day.
Okay.
That you let us know in the email.
Right.
Yes, I, I sent them the same day, um, but I am also working with the letter we got, the email we got this morning, I'm working on it.
Okay, okay. You really know, there's, there's no action.
Yeah, there's, sorry, there's.
Isn't this, this was just trying to figure out, hash out some things that weren't a hundred percent.
All right, no issue, do you think of Ms., uh, or updating us on that, or think Ms. Bauer? Arthur, you're gone, don't act, take it.
We're gonna wait on that.
Yes.
Executive session, we'll roll down. That way everybody.
Okay, rolling.
Um, so there is no grant report, uh, we haven't heard anything from Bill. Um, the, other than, you know, the fire truck being, you know, finished, and we just finished the public hearing, so that'll be done once we get the minutes from this meeting to them. Um, but other than that, we have no grant report from Bill, and so.
No grant report. And this is item number eighteen.
Yes.
Okay, uh, number nineteen, water report.
Mr. Allen? Uh, everything's, everything's going well. Uh, last issue of note was, uh, TDCQ came in for an anonymous complaint over that water leak on, I forget what street it was, Christina?
Uh, Seventh.
Seventh. So they responded, uh, to that, came out and did an investigation. Um, we were in compliance. They asked for three months' worth of records. Um, all of that was provided prior to their deadline. They were content with that. Um, final completion pictures were sent to them as well, so. No issues of note, DMR was submitted on time. Um, and the next month, we'll be doing the quarterly, uh, residual report as well.
Thank you, water report, uh, plumbing works report, this is item.
Gravel removed, uh, from repairing the line over on Seventh. I'm going to take that base, um, 'cause once the, once the ground has been, uh, settled back in and the access has been put over, uh, I'm gonna take the, the remaining bit, and I'm gonna use that on some of the potholes on, on Seventh to fill those in since it's rock face. It's just taking a little bit of time because of the, the weather change and a few other leaks have popped up in between here and there. But just as soon as I can get over there, we're just about ready to finish opening that road completely. Um, there was a leak at City Hall, we managed to get that one taken care of. We are in the processes of switching over Bill Ward's meter down to the section of his property as he has asked. Um, completion on that, we are hoping is Friday. We have also gotten the tower completely drained, the stand pipe is now completely empty. Um, it finished off sometime in the middle of the night last night, and we have the valve, all the gaskets bolt, everything needed. We are fixing to replace the valve on that, so that way we're back at in production on it. Um, and as far as I know, that should be about it right at this moment.
Thank you for that report. Uh, please report.
This month I had, uh, twelve calls for service, about twenty-fourteen code enforcement violations that I'm gonna send letters on. Uh, they're certified, uh, to whoever the property owners is on the appraisal district, not sure the resident is. There was seven reports total, uh, five are open, two are closed, and I'm still waiting on a return call from the city of Maheya about, uh, use of the hand control facility. I know last time I talked to them, they were out of room, but, um, the, the suggestion was made that if we wanted to provide any level of fencing or whatnot to create space, then we could do that as well, but I'm waiting on the official answer for that.
Thank you. All right, uh, so the mayor said.
Yeah, there's no mayor.
Uh, is it the fifth session?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, uh, we will go ahead and take this session this fourth.
So we can have a love.
Oh, yes.
Don't believe this. I can't be wiretapping. Yeah, yeah. That would be a crime, and the constable would have to arrest me.
Since my name was mentioned once.
Really?
My name's Jesse.
Well, Jesse, I never mentioned it there.
No, I didn't mention it. I didn't, I was mayor eight years here before this.
Oh, I. Constable Carter, how come you're not rehireable over in Anderson County? Can you ask that question? You didn't pass your probationary period. What happened? Tell your side. I want to report the truth. Tell me what happened, I don't know. I like.
Back in, uh, what was, that's where I first came in, officer.
Well, I pulled the letter up.
So I left.
So, so you weren't happy with it, okay?
There you go.
Hey. All I gotta go by with your answer is the personnel file's so damn old, they don't have the records, so.
Didn't like it there, so I left.
Gravel removed, uh, from repairing the line over on Seventh. I'm going to take that base, um, 'cause once the, once the ground has been, uh, settled back in and the access has been put over, uh, I'm gonna take the, the remaining bit, and I'm gonna use that on some of the potholes on, on Seventh to fill those in since it's rock face. It's just taking a little bit of time because of the, the weather change and a few other leaks have popped up in between here and there. But just as soon as I can get over there, we're just about ready to finish opening that road completely. Um, there was a leak at City Hall, we managed to get that one taken care of. We are in the processes of switching over Bill Ward's meter down to the section of his property as he has asked. Um, completion on that, we are hoping is Friday. We have also gotten the tower completely drained, the stand pipe is now completely empty. Um, it finished off sometime in the middle of the night last night, and we have the valve, all the gaskets bolt, everything needed. We are fixing to replace the valve on that, so that way we're back at in production on it. Um, and as far as I know, that should be about it right at this moment.
Thank you for that report. Uh, please report.
This month I had, uh, twelve calls for service, about twenty-fourteen code enforcement violations that I'm gonna send letters on. Uh, they're certified, uh, to whoever the property owners is on the appraisal district, not sure the resident is. There was seven reports total, uh, five are open, two are closed, and I'm still waiting on a return call from the city of Maheya about, uh, use of the hand control facility. I know last time I talked to them, they were out of room, but, um, the, the suggestion was made that if we wanted to provide any level of fencing or whatnot to create space, then we could do that as well, but I'm waiting on the official answer for that.
All right, uh, so the mayor said.
Yeah, there's no mayor.
Uh, is it the fifth session?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, uh, we will go ahead and take this session this fourth.
Oh, yes.
Don't believe this. I can't be wiretapping. Yeah, yeah. That would be a crime, and the constable would have to arrest me.
Since my name was mentioned once.
Really?
My name's Jesse.
Well, Jesse, I never mentioned it there.
No, I didn't mention it. I didn't, I was mayor eight years here before this.
Oh, I.